The time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this session the Bridgewater Town Council Meeting to order. Can everyone please stand and join me for a Pledge of Allegiance?
A Pledge of Allegiance to the flag in the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone here tonight. Just to start, I want to announce that the Town Council Meeting is being streamed live via YouTube. Please go to the town of Bridgewater Facebook page to find the link for that if you're tuning in from home. Let's see, to start, we do have some condolences we'd like to make. We have a number of veterans who did pass unfortunately. The first being Dale Shoemaker, served in the U.S. Navy. He passed away on November 17th, 2024. Gordon Reed, served in the U.S. Air Force, passed away on November 17th as well, too, 2024. Wayne Gunnison, served in the U.S. Navy, passed away in December 11th, 2024. James Brown, served in the U.S. Navy and served in Vietnam, passed away in December 20th, 2024. And finally, for many who knew him, Stan Kravitz, veteran of the U.S. Army, served in Vietnam, passed away in December 17th, 2024. Stan grew up in Bridgewater, was a former Bridgewater Selectman and Health Agent for the town, and was a Purple Heart recipient from the Vietnam War. Stan did a lot for the town of Bridgewater over the years, and he'll be greatly missed. So can I please have a moment of silence for all these deceased veterans and their families? Thank you. All right, first up, we will have approval of minutes from previous meetings. We have a few meetings to go over. The first being for the minutes of the November 26th meeting. Do I have a motion for-
So moved.
Second by Mr. McKinnon, second by Mr. Lindy. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
For the tension.
Yes, yes, we have. He wasn't in any of those meetings. For the December 3rd, 2024 meeting minutes, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Mr. Chase, second by Ms. Strigles. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And finally, for the December 17th, 2024 meeting minutes, do I have a motion for approval? Ms. Strigles, second by Mr. McKinnon. Any questions or concerns about those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I do not have any announcements from the president this evening, and we do not have any proclamations to make, so I will open up Citizens Open Forum. And as I usually mentioned, due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law Requirements, discussions will not take place during this public comment period. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future Town Council meeting. When you come on up, please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Would anyone like to come up and speak this evening? Anybody? Go on once. Go on twice. All right, very good. Thank you. We may have some closing comments. We'll see what happens there. All right. We do not have any appointments or hearings this evening, but we do have some licensed transactions to go on over. Okay, first up is Petition P. 2025-015, the annual licensing of the Common Victroler Establishment on Alcohol for Bridgewater House of Pizza. I believe they were just, were a little late in getting their application in, so that's an annual relicensing for them. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second by all sorts of people. Any questions on this application? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And next up, we have Petition P. -2025-016, the annual licensing of Class III Auto Dealer Best Auto Parts. I know they are an existing Class III dealership. I know they were going through some changes. Is there a couple of members of them here? Would you mind coming up to the podium? Just a couple of questions, if any counselors have any. Does any counselors do have any questions for them? I know I do, but I just want to open it up. Have any other counselors do? I know you guys did a great job cleaning up, and I know you're putting in a few cars again. Are you doing anything with the fencing at the front of the property?
Well, when the ground softens up and I can open, you know, actually dig into it, sure.
Okay.
There's just two sections there.
Yeah, I see a lot of it has kind of fallen down. I'm just hoping to see some new fencing there that would help cover up and protect your cars in the back there.
Yeah, the more urgent it is, then sooner I'll do it.
Okay, sounds good. Not a problem. I just wanted to ask, that's all. Do I have a motion to approve his reapproval?
So moved.
Mr. McKinnon, and who I have seconded by Mr. Chase. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, that takes care of the licensed transactions for this evening. We will move on to presentations, and we have our very own Chief Delmonte here for a Police Department update. Chief, I will have you come on up and take the podium.
While Anne Marie's getting that set up, the first thing, I just want to introduce some of our staff who are here today. Anne Marie Gill is our confidential executive assistant. Lieutenant Jack Hennessy is in charge of operations. Lieutenant Scott Heil is not here. He's away in Quantico, Virginia, attending the National Academy. So we have a brief presentation for you today. Really, we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about the status of the department as it is today. We'll talk about some of the programs that we're involved with, some of the community events, some of the challenges that we face for the future, and the direction that we're really taking. We put most of the details in the slideshow for you today. I did want to thank all of you for inviting us here. We do appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk about what it is that we do. I also want to thank Blythe for having us here as well. And I do have to tell you that we've really enjoyed some strong community support through the years, so I want to thank the community for the support that we have. And one of the things I hope you get from this is the strength and the character of the people that we have, the men and women of the Police Department that are working every day. I can't say enough. I understand that's probably my job. I'm probably supposed to tell you how great some of these people are, but I get to see it every single day and some of the things that they do that really are not known to most people. So I really want to say thank you very much to all the personnel that we have for the job they do. We can't do anything without our people. Anyway, with that said, let's get started. So the structure of the Police Department is chief, captain, two lieutenants, eight sergeants, 33 officers. We have four cadets. Typically, our assignment is three cadets, and we have three professional staff. One of the problems that we face, and we'll talk a little bit about that, is recruiting. Recruiting is a serious problem for us. We currently have four positions that are unfilled, four people we cannot fill the positions. We're trying to do what we can. The police cadets serve in that capacity. What police cadets are, they're local residents who work on the desk. They support the desk officer. So our police officers, in their rotation during the course of the week, will work a road assignment. They'll get a sector, patrol sector, and then one of those nights, they'll be responsible for desk duties, which is not only taking care of 911 calls, business line calls, walk-ins, prisoners, things like that. That's what the police cadets do. You can go on to the next, Anne Marie? Next. That's all right. Personnel assignments. So amongst that complement of 45 police officers, as I said, we have 41 that are actually working today, but we have four full-time detectives. We have two officers that work part-time on the web major crimes and drug task force. We have one officer assigned to the FBI Gang Task Force. We have one full-time school resource officer for the four schools. We have two officers that are assigned as proactive enforcement officers. They police in an unmarked patrol vehicle in select neighborhoods that are having problems and areas of concern. We have two patrol canine officers. We have one court prosecutor, an officer assigned full-time to the court, and we have one firearms licensing officer, one officer is assigned part-time. We'll go right to the next. And so as I said, there are really four school buildings that we're responsible for. The school resource officer right now is Officer John Pistana. He primarily spends most of his time at the high school, but I can tell you it's a very busy assignment. Does that mean it's a bad school environment? No, not necessarily. There's just a lot of demands to make sure that we're supporting the school. The police officer is there. School resource officer is a good title. It's a resource for the school to provide the support we can to the school environment as a whole. It's also to provide a deterrent from nefarious actors who may be out there as well. You can go on, Anne Marie? Southeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council, SEMLEC, we're a member. We've been a member agency. There are 30 cities and towns in southeastern Massachusetts. Essentially, what this is, is a mutual aid collaborative. We assign officers to different special assignments. They work collaboratively with officers from many different agencies, and these are some of the examples of officers that we have assigned to the various units. SWAT team, mobile operations, which is our motorcycles, our bicycle response team. We have officers that are part of the Critical Insurance and Stress Management Team, Civil Disturbance Unit, and Drone Unit. These are just some examples here for you, some of the assignments that they do. The Bridgewater Police Department is an accredited police agency, which essentially means that we use best practices in the policing profession. We've been accredited. We are 63rd or 64th out of all cities and towns in Massachusetts to be accredited back in 2016. We have to go through that process every three years. Our annual or three-year renewal will come up this year. We'll get evaluated. I will send you a notification to let you know that we're going to be evaluated. We welcome any input you or the community has about the operations of the Police Department. And as I said, it just shows that we're using best practices in policing. Community events. There are a lot of things that we're involved with. Halloween Safety Day. High Five Fridays. DARE Summer Camp. It's a one-week camp that we send our offices and about 20 other students from the school district go with us, representing our community, to the DARE camp. All 28 cities and towns in Plymouth County participate. We also participate in the Law Enforcement Torch Run for Special Olympics. There's a police parade that goes to the grounds over to Harvard for the Special Olympics. As you know, we have, this is our 10th year, the Bridgewater Police 5K and One Mile Kids Fun Run. In the adult, we usually have somewhere between 200 and 300 students. Rebecca Kaler is the race director and has been for all 10 years that we have hosted that race. We've also been partners at the university with the Washington Mandela Fellows, and I know many of you meet them each year. It's a great experience for us. We show them the police station and also give them the opportunity not only to talk with some of the command staff, but some of the officers as well. All of those members, as you probably already know, are people that are in law or law enforcement or the judiciary for the various countries. So it's a good experience, we hope, for them, and it's a good experience for us. This is a recent example. We escorted a middle school class over to the State House. Sophia Barco, a local resident, young lady with an excellent voice. She sang the National Anthem for the opening of a Senate session, and we escorted them in for that. Thanksgiving Dinner for Seniors. We've been doing that for 25 years, and we're very proud to do that. We host approximately 160, 170 seniors at the senior center, and then we deliver meals, about 20 or 25 meals we'll deliver to homebound seniors. That is provided. The meals are provided by Bridgewater State University. The president has supported us in that for several years, and we very much appreciate their commitment to the dinner as well. I can tell you, during COVID, we delivered almost 300 meals to seniors in their homes, and we did not do it at the senior center. And that was done almost exclusively by our police officers and their family members. Boston's Run to Remember. There are many police agencies that support this effort, this half-mile road race that takes place through Boston and Cambridge. No Shave November. Each year, we, the officers in the Bridgewater Police Association dedicate funds. We relax our grooming standards for the month of November, and as a result, they raise money and it goes to a local charity, and this just happens to be one year we gave the money over to the senior center. But usually, it's a local charity. We bring that money back to. Be Fit Challenge. Usually, the guys get a team together, and they go into Boston at the Garden and participate as a team. There are a fair number of officers who get together, and they might do, you know, a particular challenge, but they also work out together once a month. They'll set up a workout of the day where the guys will get together collectively and do a workout. We also have a local instructor for self-defense come in that we pay for once a week to provide them with some added training that maybe is outside the normal training regimen that we would already have to commit to, normal in-service training, by Anne Marie? Programs. One of our longest-running programs is the Citizens Police Academy. I can tell you that this is probably one of our more successful programs because it is, it's a demonstration of the commitment of the Police Department, working with the community. All of the classes in the Citizens Police Academy, with a few exceptions, Fire Department supports us as well, are taught by Bridgewater Police Officers who volunteer their time to teach and show residents of our community what it is we do, why we do it, how we do it. We don't teach anybody to be a police officer, but we're essentially opening our doors to show them what we do and who we are. This is a program we started in the last two years, the Criminal Justice Program at the high school. This is for any Bridgewater residents, so even if they don't go to the high school, they go to a different school, but they're Bridgewater residents. Students are allowed to go to this program. We generally run it at least once a month, sometimes twice a month, throughout the course of the year, on various topics dealing with policing. Some of it, we actually prepare the students. If they want to have a career, some of them want to, already know they want to have a career in law enforcement, then we'll have a career night, and we bring in various law enforcement agencies and find out what may work best for them. It's also a good place for us to connect with some of our young people and find out, you know, what direction they're going, how we can be helpful to them as well. It's been a very successful program, and again, another program that is really a product and effort of the police officers that we have. This is not a, this is not an order. We're telling officers, you have to teach this, and you have to do this. These are officers who volunteer and say, hey, I'd like to give back, and this is the way I can contribute. So very successful program that way. Generally, the students we've had, this was the first year, generally, the student numbers are somewhere between 15 and 20 for at least the last couple of classes. So it's been very successful. In fact, one of the students that's up there is actually now a police cadet with us. So this is just an example. Many of the outreach efforts we make, we show up at the college several times a year for career fairs at the Criminal Justice Department and even beyond that. Bridgewater Police Foundation is a 501(c)(3) that supports the efforts of the Police Department that are outside our normal budget. It really supports primarily the road race, so the money that is achieved from the road race is put back into the race, number one. Number two, we also designate every year a local charity that we put. If there are proceeds beyond what supports the race, then those will go into that particular charity. We've done Dogs for Vets. We have done a variety of local charities that have benefited the local community, and that's what the foundation really supports. It also supports some programs. We have purchased items for officers that, we'll talk a little bit about mental health and the importance of our personnel and taking care of our people, and sometimes, you know, the various books and other pamphlets that are out there that are supportive in that way, and the foundation has purchased those as well. 911 Call Taking Emergency Medical Dispatch. So if you're not aware of it, all 911 calls, we are the primary answering point at the police station here. For all 911 landline, Phase 1 and Phase 2 cell phone direct calls, those, Phase 1, Phase 2 just has to do with the geospatial location information that we get, but essentially, all 911 calls come in locally. We also have an external speaker. A lot of people don't realize that whenever a 911 call is taken in by us at the police station, the Fire Department can hear it as it happens. We have an external speaker in both of the stations, and we'll do the exact same thing at the news station. So they're hearing the call as it's being taken. There's no delay in that. One other step we've taken in the last couple of years, we also have inserted Live 911. This technology allows officers through their laptops in the cruisers to hear the 911 call actually in their cruiser at the same time. So before that call is even dispatched or designated to an officer, they can hear the nature of the complaint or nature of the call, the severity of it, and already start on their way before anybody ever says a word to them. We tried to pick the best faces that we could for, there's two of them right there. Just to give you a sense of 911 calls, in 2017, which is really the last year, that's when the last generation of 911 took place. That was as far back as they go. We had 5,900 calls, and we did over 7,000 calls in 2024. Those are 911 calls. That does not include dispatcher taking business line calls. We have several business lines, day-to-day business at the front desk, and so forth. So anyway, just to give you a sense of where we're... So we tried to try and capture, you know, what has changed in policing. There are a lot of things that have changed in policing. We used to use our metric was, you know, how many homicides did you have? How many robberies did you have? And generally, some of the more serious crimes have gone down. This is across the country. It's not unique to us locally, but we've noticed other things have changed. So the demand for us has always felt like it's increased and increased, but we haven't seen those same, you know, kind of the FBI benchmark kind of crimes is what was driving it. But we've always felt like, boy, there's a lot of demand on our policing service on a day-to-day basis. So we tried to look at some places where that may help explain that, and this is one of those. Mental health calls, it's difficult to categorize. We have tried to do that, but there are a lot of calls that we get that may not start out this way, but end up over here when we figure out what it is that's the problem. It might, you know, again, begin here and start over here. So it's difficult. I don't think this number captures everything, but you can even see that very quickly, even the fundamental tracking system that we have shows a definite difference in the last 10 years. You can go on to the next, Anne Marie, please. Reported deaths. Now, these are circumstances under which it may be an accidental, somebody discovered somebody at home. Why do we include these here? Because these are labor-intensive, because we never know when we discover these. We certainly work with the District Attorney's Office when we have a homicide or there's some suspicion of something else may have taken place. We always do that. But they're very labor-intensive. In other words, we have to assign several detectives, and we'll talk about, you know, what the demands are for us in the future, but detectives have to investigate those like they would any other crime. So they're very labor-intensive, and even those, we've seen a change. I can't give you a reason why the numbers have changed, but what I can tell you is the demand has changed. And we just isolated, those are ones that are pretty, how should I say, straightforward. There are other circumstances we may have. You know, there may be some suicides as part of that and other justifications, but you can go on to the next, Anne Marie. Again, I don't think this captures the complexity of the problem, but it is an indicator of where things have gone. This is people that have been arrested for operating on the influence of liquor and/or drugs. As you know, for certain drugs, there is no standardized testing for us, so the overwhelming number of these cases are for OUI alcohol because there is a standardized test for that. Until science can catch up and have a standardized test for OUI drugs, it's a complex number to get a hold of. And these are cases where there may have been some accident involved, or maybe that an officer was out there proactively trying to pursue. But you can see how the numbers have changed for us. That's an indicator of how things have trended. You can go on to the next, Anne Marie? In 2024, we had three fatalities. This is a significant issue as well, because not only is it labor-intensive, but our job is to try to prevent fatalities. Like, one is not acceptable, never mind three. And we try to do the best that we can. We are in a proactive posture. So many police agencies have different responsibilities for their communities. Some communities have gotten to a stage where they're in a reactive posture, where the police are only responding when it's absolutely necessary and because you have to come and it's already happened. We are trying to stay in a proactive posture. Now, that requires a couple of things to do that, but we've tried to be proactive in this area as well. So that's why we have assigned two officers specifically to traffic enforcement. That is their full-time designated obligation. We give them a vehicle specifically for that purpose because we need to bring this number down. There's a variety of reasons why those occurred, but we need to be out there proactively doing that. I can tell you in the last, you know, we talked about how busy is the department. There's a lot of demands in the Police Department. I can tell you, in the last three days, we responded to a fatal crash on Sunday. We executed a warrant for a child pornography case today, and we had a suicide today. So the last three days, dotted with a variety of other calls in between there. Anne Marie, you can go ahead. Restraining orders, harassment prevention orders. You can see, now, these are violations. These are people who have had these issued, and one of the, some of the statistics that are not included in here is we're the ones who, we will take victims. We have to get them the restraining order, help them at least get to a judge after hours. Sometimes, we're serving orders that were from another jurisdiction. Those numbers are pretty high. These are the ones that actually, people that are local that have violated those restraining orders. So, you can go on to the next. The future. So police, I'm often asked this question, what's the staffing of the Police Department? Where should it be? A Police Department with the current modern demands of a community like this is a nice community, but the demands of this community are pretty significant, and our job is to make sure that we handle those, right? That you don't always know about them. You don't always know, you know, what's going on, because it's our job to handle those problems. The department in a community this size should have somewhere between 50 and 52 police officers. We have 45 today. We should have a full-time mental health substance abuse clinician. We are members of a regional collaborative. We had a clinician, a grant funding, but that grant funding is now in limbo because there had been some budget cuts at the state level. So that money has been frozen. We still would like to have somebody. I think we have enough business that we should have somebody here, full-time, working with the Police Department. We utilize the co-responder model, and that is when we get a call for X, Y, and Z problem that may implicate mental health or substance abuse, we bring that clinician with us on scene. We think that's the most effective. It has the most impact, and we'd like to continue to do that, but we do need to do that, and something we should look at doing locally. We were members with five other communities, and to be honest with you, you know, us, Middleborough, East West, Whitman, and the college, and the demand was so great that we need to, we need to look at it locally. We need to look at it from a different point of view. We should also have two officers full-time on the web task force. So I mentioned to you earlier, we have four full-time detectives, and those are officers who are handling plainclothes investigations. Those are your serious crimes, your robberies, sexual assaults. Those are cases that involve significant larcenies, property crimes, breaking and entering, things like that. Your web task force officers are those officers on plainclothes who are investigating your drug crimes or other multi-jurisdictional crimes. Web task force is W-E-B, stands for West, East, and Bridgewater. It's the three communities combined, but they also have other mutual aid partners that are assigned to the group. We have two investigators, but ours are part-time. That means some days of the week, they're in uniform, and we should have two people on that all the time. It's a problem that the community, not only our community, every community faces all the time, and we need to have a proactive position on that. And the second place, or the next place, I should say, is second school resource officer. I don't think that one school resource officer is adequate for four school buildings and the number of students that we have. Remember what I said? They are responsible for maintaining a good environment. There are a whole variety of reasons why it's good to have a school resource officer there, and one of those reasons is a deterrent effect on nefarious actors out there. And I think a school resource- I think a school resource officer. Now, I recognize that's a product of funding. It's also a product of having the people to do it. So there are some challenges associated with it. It's not so simple as just saying, yes, we're going to do that. Tried to get you some more smiley faces. Challenges. So one of our challenges, obviously, and this is not unique to us, is maintaining the health and well-being of our personnel. There are a lot of stresses. There's a lot of demands, as you can imagine, and our priority is making sure that they're okay. We're getting them adequate resources to make sure that they're okay. They are our most valuable resource. Buildings and cars are part of our mission and part of our tool belt. They are not the most important thing. Our people are the most important asset that we have by far, and so we need to make sure that they're okay. The nature and scope of mental health and substance abuse calls, they've become more complex. They've become more demanding, more resource-driven. They are not so simple as going to a call. If we go to an alarm call, we check the building and there's no, or there's somebody breaking into the building and we make an arrest, or we take some kind of action. Those are, you know, finite. Like, many of these mental health and substance abuse calls require further, they're prolonged, they're things that take a long time to handle, to adequately address, you know, on scene. And so one of the problems that we have is there are many of them, and they are complex. They're not so simple to address. And lastly, which is certainly not leastly, is the recruitment of qualified police officer candidates is a major, a major problem. We're doing the best that we can. We're trying to be creative. As you know, civil service changed this year. We're a civil service community. All of our police officers are covered under chapter 31 civil service, and civil service rules have recently changed. It will allow us to go outside, at least for hiring, will allow us to utilize an alternative pathway, meaning we can hire outside the actual exam itself. Plus, there'll be a regional pool. Not only will we be able to hire local residents, but regional residents, if you will. There are some alternatives. I'm hopeful that that will have some help or some impact on the recruiting, but we're doing what we can to get outside our station to continue to recruit because that's a major problem. Emerging threats. This is true of all police agencies, newer and more deadly illegal drugs that are out there, and those drugs being combined with alcohol or used solely in drunk driving or impaired driving events. They're deadly to us as investigators, not only fentanyl or car fentanyl. These are very, very potent narcotics. Lack of available mental health and substance abuse treatment facilities. We don't get involved with the facilities, but we see the effects of that lack of treatment and availability to them. That comes back to the communities without those, that type of long-term treatment and addressing the problems. The prevalence and accountability of serious crimes, there are many, there are a lot of weapons out there. There are a lot of weapons out there. And what we want and what we're hopeful is that there'll be more accountability for those people that are committing those kinds of serious crimes will help, but it's an emerging threat for all of us. We, as a residential, primarily residential community, we have come across some of these so-called ghost guns, people making weapons here. So we know it's prevalent across the country and across the Commonwealth as well. And crimes involving technology, the reason this is a threat is because there are a lot of crimes where not only could we do a better job in identifying perpetrators and stopping or preventing crimes, we need that educational piece and that training to be better educated. We do have some people who are very good with technology, but also technology is being used to victimize people a lot more. We don't find that the federal resources are there for those crimes. So a lot of victims of scams and technology crimes, they're coming to us and relying on us, and we want to have an adequate response and an adequate posture to be able to help them. Training. As I mentioned to you earlier, the FBI National Academy, Lieutenant Heil is away attending now. We want to make sure that we're broadening our horizons with our leadership, our command staff team. We send officers every year to the Use of Force Summit in December. That's down in Connecticut. We usually send anywhere between four and six officers every year. We do annual mandatory hostile event response training. We did that this past, I think it was in October, Mr. McGrath, we're fortunate, was, played a victim. And we do that for all personnel. All of our police officers go through that training. We do it every year. We had it on a three-year cycle where we kind of started out small and then gradually worked up to a more active, robust environment. And we involve police and fire EMS because that's part of the equation. Police's job is to stop the killing. Fire EMS is to stop the dying. That's just the reality of it in those kind of circumstances, and we're making sure that we're prepared and ready to deal with a circumstance like that. Continue to advance professional and monthly specialized training. The advanced professional training usually shows itself in private vendors. The state sometimes has some programs that are more advanced, and so you'll see a lot of training. Money goes towards that. And monthly specialized training, those generally deal with those officers who are assigned to those semilex specialized units. Smiling faces. So infrastructure, this is a relatively small issue, but I raise it here. One of the things I would just recommend is for the rear parking lot, you know, we need to address something out in the back. Out there's not so much as its energy as it is. The readiness of our vehicles, a lot of times we look at the fleet, snowstorms, inclement weather. We need to have a place to try to keep those vehicles ready to go for the next shift, and that's something to consider. And the other thing that I'd like to consider is something in conjunction with highway. And as you know, for the last 10, 12 years or so, we've taken it more serious. And as you saw in New Orleans, we've taken a serious position when it comes to the parades that we have. These are vulnerable places. They are vulnerable to intentional acts, but they're just as vulnerable to accidental acts, and we have to be conscious of that. And I'd like to see us do something a little bit different there, at least on the infrastructure side. Go ahead, Emery. So, what questions do you have?
All right.
We try to be brief. I hope that I'm not sure what I've done.
Thank you so much, chief. Well, I'll definitely open up to the council. Any questions for the chief?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, thank you so much for your presence here and for a great presentation and to reacquaint us with a lot of things in your department and certainly some of these that we're learning about for the first time, I'm sure. By the way, let me just say firstly, congratulations to you for your recent selection to the presidency. Mass Police Chiefs Association, that's a great honor, and I think we can all share in that honor with you, but we're very proud of you in that respect and of your department. You did mention Lieutenant Heil, who was attending the FBI Academy for training presently, and I know that's something you've done in your past as well, and I found it particularly interesting. Could you elaborate a little bit on the, you know, the, just how special an event that is, the ability of a police officer to attend that kind of training?
Yeah. So, you know, our strategy is to get more advanced training and develop our people. And we're very fortunate. Scott is only the third police officer from the department in the last 20 years been selected. The FBI, the Boston Division is who actually selects the candidates. I think they had 170 or 180 candidates, police leaders throughout the Commonwealth, and it's not just Massachusetts. It's Maine, New Hampshire, Rhode Island as well. So very few candidates are selected to actually attend that, so it says a lot for Scott. It says a lot for the future of the police department. We have a lot of very talented and educated and leaders of the future for our police department. So it's a symptom of good things to come, but we've been very fortunate that way. It's also part of our overall plan to get officers better educated. We have to do more for training. Every time, you know, anytime we've been given the opportunity to come in and talk about what are the needs, training is always at the very top of that list. Training is what makes the difference. And the National Academy is internationally known program. There are only 250 or so police leaders from the largest to the smallest agencies, and some international countries are represented in that academy class that Scott is in with. So it's probably one of the best professional development programs. He's down there for 10 weeks. I appreciate your support and the community's support to be able to do that. You will be able to reap the rewards from that for many years to come, and I hope you'll see that, but, and I believe you will. But I want to thank you for that support and commitment to do that and recognize how important it is for the training. I can tell you, we're very fortunate in the personnel that we have, but also the command staff that we have. And you have a couple here that are very professional people, and I'm just a pretty face.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you, chief, for the excellent presentation. And again, congratulations. I'll echo my fellow councilors' comments. What do we have to do to get those solar panels for you? I think that's a wonderful idea, and it'll, you'll be able to, is it grants? Is it, what type of funding?
Well, I think that's, I know there's probably some people in the room that are much better at the energy piece of it. As I look at it from the policing side of it, which is I'm looking for our preparedness and readiness, and I think there's certainly an energy advantage to it, but truthfully, I suggested it because I'm looking at how we staff and be prepared and have ourselves, you know, ready for response. And that would be part of, that's part of that picture, so that vehicles, the instruments that we use are better prepared. But that's probably a local question. I'm sure there's, there's not a lot of grants on the law enforcement side, truthfully. There's not a lot of grants out there for those kinds of things that are solely associated with policing. I think there are probably energy generalized grants that are out there.
Definitely have someone in the room that's very expert at that, and I just think that should be sooner than later because it'll help you right away. Thank you.
Chief, thank you for being here. Thank you for that presentation. Thank you to your staff. And I don't think words can describe a thank you from all the citizens for the work that you and your staff do. So I'll do my best and say thank you for that. I think I'm lucky enough to live in Bridgewater and raise a family here in Bridgewater, and it's because of people that are on your staff and yourself. So thank you for that. With that being said, I do have a few questions. Recruiting was something that you spoke a lot about, and I was just curious to see if I could get your thoughts and feedback on why that's so difficult to recruit folks nowadays, and why in particular for Bridgewater is that challenging?
Well, I don't think, first of all, I don't think it's unique to Bridgewater. This is a much bigger problem. I just don't think there are people that are going into this profession for a variety of reasons. Some of it may be what they see on television at night. It may have been based on myths or falsehoods. I can tell you, this is a noble and honorable profession, and as I, you know, I appreciate you mentioning, you know, the association that I'm involved with. And I said it there and I'll say it here, you know, there are people out there that are going to vilify me and my colleagues because we wear a uniform. And the reality is, is that I make no apologies for wearing a uniform or carrying a badge. I'm not going to apologize for that because I get to see what impact the men and women that I work with, the impact that they have on this community every day, the investment, the toll it takes on them, the toll it takes on their families. But I see what they do every single day, and I'm very fortunate to have that. Unfortunately, that's not the story that's always told. There are, the thing I respect greatly about our profession is we are imperfect people, and our profession needs to do a better job in particular places and needs to make improvements. And I actually, I appreciate that about the profession. That's why I love the job that I have and who I'm involved with, because I know it's noble and honorable. We have to make corrections. We have to make changes, but we make those changes. We make those improvements with, all with the realization that we are imperfect human beings trying to do the right thing and trying to help people. That's what it comes down to. Unfortunately, that message is not always told.
Thank you. Next question. You didn't mention BSU too much in your presentation. I was just curious about that relationship, what that looks like, knowing they have their own staff over there, but what does that mean for you all with the college?
Great question. I'm glad you mentioned. So for several years, we've had a practice where we swear in all of Bridgewater State University police officers as special police officers. So we have an excellent relationship. We've had for many, many years, as you know. Dave Tillinghast is the chief, is retired, and Glenn Anderson is the new chief down there. Worked with him for probably 25 years. Professional and nothing but collaborative and collegial. And so we make them special police officers, so there's never any issues of jurisdiction. They're driving down the road and somebody's driving on the wrong side of the road. I want, I don't want to wait until, if we don't have an officer that's close by, I want those officers to stop that car right away before somebody gets hurt. And we have that kind of system in place. They know if that, if one of our officers has an incident over here by themselves and they happen to be close by, they'll stop and help. And that's, that's what I expect. That's what we have become accustomed to, but that's because of that mutual collaboration. We do not, this town and this police department are not on an island. We have to work with our partners. We're better because of it. We don't just work with our local, regional partners, our local municipalities. We work with our state partners, our federal partners. We do that in a whole host of ways that you saw in the presentation today. And we do that very, not only do we do it with the college police, but we have that exact same professional relationship with our fire departments. And, you know, our fire department is very professional with their, not only fire service, but EMS service. We have a great relationships. Many, many communities cannot say that. We do. We have that.
Just a comment, chief. As somebody that works in education and who sees the mental health crisis every day, it's mind-blowing to me that anybody would think about cutting funding as it relates to helping folks with that. And so my promise to you is, next time I see our state representatives that have recently been elected, I will ask them to make that a priority because I think that's important. And that growing number that you showed on the screen is eye-opening, but also not shocking to somebody who has experience there. So I too would love to see our department have a full-time clinician that can help assist your staff and those folks that are making those calls.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And then one, one last question for you, chief. We ask of you every day to help support us and to serve us. I'm going to take off my council hat and ask you as a citizen, what can we do to support the Bridgewater Police Department as citizens?
Well, that's a great question. It's probably difficult because I'm not in the business of telling, you know, we serve the public. We ask what it is that the public needs and what we can do. I think sometimes it's kind words, sometimes it's notes, but to tell you the truth, we see, we're very fortunate that way. This community has always supported this police department. Sometimes we'll see it in the kids that come in from the brownie class that have cooked brownies. You know, or various ways. There are a lot of small symbols. People come in and show their thanks and give their thanks. And I think that's, I think that's, we appreciate that. We're here to serve. That's what we get paid to do. That's what our duty is, and, you know, we're privileged and honored that we get to do it. The people that we have can work anywhere they want. The character and talent that they have and the education that they bring to the table, over 80% of our people have a bachelor's degree or better. They have military experience. They have a lot of life's experience. They can go and work in any place they want. They choose to work here. And I'm glad they do, and I appreciate you saying all that, Paul. It means a lot, but I'm also here to verify that the community has, we have never felt that the community has left us. As you know, in COVID, everybody saw a lot of different things take place, and we didn't close our doors, but at the same time, there were also people from the community, I can tell you, that came forward. They made masks from the roll of cloth they had in the back room. And they didn't ask for anything. They didn't even leave their name. They just brought them in and said, look, if this is what you need, we're here. And people have done that. If you go in the station, you'll see notes and cards from a variety of residents who just want to say thank you. And we appreciate that. We've always had that support and continue to have that support. We appreciate your support, right? And that of the town managers as well. We appreciate all the support we've been given. So, thank you. I hope I answered your question.
I think you did. Thank you very much. Thank you to your staff as well, too.
Any other council comments? Ms. Riegelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, chief. So I have no questions, but more so just a public comment. Two comments. First, thank you for taking care of so many of my close friends that are under your watch and are serving this town proudly and bravely. So just thank you for that. And second, thank you for Sunday. Sunday for my neighbors and I was a little traumatic. The last thing you want to see is a car plowing through one of your neighbor's trees and not really knowing how it happened, why it happened, and whether the person was going to be okay. So thank you for how your staff handled that, how timely you were where those of us who lived in the general vicinity where the road was shut down weren't inconvenienced. And thank you for being transparent and honest about what was going on. So I just wanted to publicly thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other councils? Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, chief, for coming. When you talked about restraining orders and harassment, do you know if our town's connected with shelters or anything that women and children go to? Because I know some towns use like hogs and stuff.
Yeah. So we have resources. Whenever we respond to a domestic violence incident, we provide them with a list of resources. We do have contacts to get people to safe places. I wouldn't be at liberty to, you know, be more specific than that, but our job is to help provide resources to those victims. Yep.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
And the comments from councillors?
I'll just finish off by, again, thanking you very much, Chief. My apologies for not making your event where you got named the President of the Police Chiefs Association, but I want to publicly acknowledge that and congratulate you for that. It's a testament to your leadership and the years that you've put in that got you to that position. So congratulations on that. Thank you again for this presentation and the town council is very appreciative of the, of what you put forth with us tonight. We're, you know, thankful for the leadership that you have given the town and the officers that you've trained. And we're so proud of the entire department as well as our fire department. And if there's anything more we can do as a council to help support you guys, we certainly want to try and do that. And to the comments that Mr. Murphy made, we're, I can say 100% behind you guys. And again, we'll see what we can do to help you with some of those requests.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you so much, Chief.
All right. We have one other presentation tonight. We have our newly elected and sworn in state representative, our eighth Plymouth District, Dennis Gallagher. So we'll welcome up Mr. Gallagher to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, and Happy New Year to everybody. And welcome councillor ready to your first council meeting as a sworn in member. Yes, thank you for stepping up to the plate. I just wanted to take a few minutes to say hello and to talk about what we are doing on Beacon Hill and how it can certainly affect the town of Bridgewater as you move forward, particularly as the budget season is upon us. The good news is, is that recently the December revenues in the state have indicated that they are better and the state is now in the black. That's only halfway through the fiscal year. But as we were sworn in last Wednesday on New Year's Day, there was a lot of chatter about the upcoming budget, which we will get into very quickly. And it'll be a very brief period of time where we'll be able to react, to be able to set things going forward. But as I assume the office, I do not have an office yet. We are in what they call the bullpen where we're all in a room similar to the way you guys are sitting. There's 19 new state representatives that are in the bullpen waiting to get their committee assignments and waiting to get their offices, which could take a couple of months. But as everybody knows, nobody does things alone. You always need someone to help you. You always need a sidekick and someone to do some of the grunt work. And I wanted to also tonight to introduce and welcome my legislative aide, Evan Francis, who's here tonight. Who will be helping me out and the towns of Bridgewater and Rainham as we move forward in this legislative session. Evan is a BSU graduate in political science as of last month. So he is an absolute great addition to Beacon Hill and his expertise that he will bring to, to the town. As, as you know, and I have always encouraged the council members, if they can, to attend the Mass Municipal Conference, which is later this month. It's called something different now. I think it's called Connect 351. Usually what I get out of that conference, and I'm assuming town administrators and town managers get the same thing, is that's when you initially hear from the governor as what the tone of the budget will be for the ensuing fiscal year starting July 1st. At that meeting she has with all representatives and gives you a sense of her priorities, of what the budget will be, particularly for municipalities. And so I encourage all of you to, once that is done, the, what they call House One is released. And that's the step one in the budget process on Beacon Hill. Then it goes to committees and it goes to the House. It goes to committees and the process can take, as you know, well into the summer. As I indicated in my campaign, some of the things that I am going to advocate for are roads, bridges and sidewalks and improvement in infrastructure. I also did talk about mental health and how we need to address that in a much more serious way when it affects our young people and our older population in our communities. Whether it be additional funding through the opioid settlements that we got to help our police departments and, and health services in those areas. That's some of the areas that I'll be focusing on. The legislative process is very, very tight, particularly for new representatives that really have not had a flavor of Beacon Hill. I have taken a look at my predecessor's legislation that he has filed in the past and we are currently reviewing them. And we will be refiling a lot of the same bills that he has filed. I think they are worthy and I think that they are certainly benefit not only to the town of Bridgewater and Rainham, but to specific individuals that he has been trying to help over the years. The deadline that we have to file anything is Friday, January 17th. And we got access to file bills yesterday. So how we file them, what we do is a very short window of time. Anything that is filed by that 5 o'clock on 17th, not 5 o'clock, 4:59, 59, they said, has to be, everything has to be filed in order for that particular bill to get a hearing in the upcoming legislative session. So if there are issues that I'm not aware of that need to be filed on behalf of the town of Bridgewater, let me know and we will put something together. That does not mean that bills cannot be filed after that date. It just will not guarantee them a hearing during this, this legislative process. It could get a hearing if it is something that that particular committee chair thinks is worthy or the speaker thinks it's a worthy thing to bring forward. So it's, it could be difficult, but we have already filed four, we have refiled, I should say. We have already refiled four of the pieces of legislation that my predecessor has filed already. So we are reviewing them as we, as we move forward. So I think that local aid and unrestricted general government aid is very important to how the town operates in addition to Chapter 70 and Chapter 91, Chapter 71 monies offered the schools. School funding, unrestricted government aid is very important to communities. And those are the areas that I'll be looking at when House One comes out, when the governor's budget comes out to, to address. So I will come here as often as you think it's necessary to update you. I would encourage all of you at any time to give our office a call or even come in to visit us at the State House. I'm here to work for you and the citizens of Bridgewater and Rainham as I move forward in this new venture in this area to help out the community, just as all as you want to help our, help out the community in your role as councillors. So with that, like I said, the legislative process for me to file any new bills ends on Friday, January 17th. It's, it, it gives the new legislator, legislative legislators really a disadvantage as to knowing, you know, that the process of doing it isn't that difficult. It's putting the language together, looking to see if there are other legislators that are filing similar or comparable bills where you might just want to be a co-sponsor on that or they be a co-sponsor on mine and say, look, we're both filing the same thing. Why don't we just join together? And we're looking at those things as well. But it will, it will be a pretty active session, I believe, on Beacon Hill. The House Rules Committee is also taking a look at the schedule that has been in place for many years, see if they can change that and try to be a little more productive. However, they all said that the last legislative session was the most productive legislative session in many, many years on Beacon Hill and a lot of good things were done. So with that, again, I just wanted to introduce myself, give you an idea of the legislative process. Try to attend MMA later this month if you have, if your schedule can permit. And I'll be available at any time to anyone wherever. And I will be holding quarterly coffee hours, office hours in various locations. I think those are very, very important. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Representative Gallagher. I'll open up the questions from the council. Mr. Lindy can start.
Thank you for coming here. It's nice to see you back in council chambers and congratulations. Three things.
Three.
First one, get us as much money as you can get us. I know you'll deliver, okay? I know you're a freshman rep, but Bridgewater needs attention to get that funding that you mentioned. The other thing is, I know in the past when we've tried to push through charter changes, it's a very long, cumbersome process and it needs a lot of attention. And I think there are things that are pending that will need someone to shepherd that through. So I know you know our process and I think it'll translate well to the state process. And last but not least, what is your phone number for your office? I know it's temporary, but it's a good thing to know.
617-722. I think it's 3600. You'll have to ask for me because I don't have my extension yet.
Okay. Thank you.
But my email is dennis.gallagher@mahouse.gov. That's my email.
Thank you. And hopefully we will have you here on a regular basis because I think it's important. And hopefully we can get our state senator to come here too because we have a new state senator as well.
I certainly will advocate aggressively for funds for the town of Bridgewater, particularly when it comes to our education system simply. And that is only, well, really it's, it's because we're a regional school system, I do think we get shortchanged. And there is, there were a lot of caucuses on Beacon Hill where, like there's a veterans caucus, there's Trails and, and Trails Caucus. There's all different types of causes, progressive caucuses, all kinds of caucuses on Beacon Hill. And one of them is Regional School Caucus where they meet, it's not a committee or anything within the structure of state government, but there are those that have those particular interests that meet to try to brainstorm on how we can better do that, do the things. As far as home rule, home rule petitions, which is really one of the things that are filed, can be filed, that would be outside the bill process. So there's really no timeframe for those. It can be filed at any time. It, it wouldn't really be a part of the bill process. It would be, anything can be filed at any time. But it does take time for those to go through the process as well, through legal and things like that. But I will check and see what home rule, I didn't, I really haven't taken a look at what home rule petitions are pending relative to Bridgewater and Beacon Hill. I don't think there's. There's four, okay.
We have some.
So we'll look at those.
Just two, I, I said three, I'm going to add two more. Prison mitigation funds have been cut, I think, three years in a row. They keep telling us that the DOC budget has been cut. I'd like to see it go back. It seems like Bridgewater gets shortchanged in that regard. We pay for MBTA, okay? We get a small amount, although it's increased this year for BSU. But that's kind of a sore spot for me. And I want to piggyback on what my fellow councillor has done very well with our former state Senator Timblety is to get parts of Route 18 refinished and paved. And we need to do more with that. So that's what's that, is that?
Infrastructure. Well, it, it would be part of Chapter 70, but you know, I don't think Chapter 70 funds covers a half mile of a road these days. So you need.
Yeah.
You need additional, additional grant money available for larger projects like, you know, you talk about Cross Street or South Street or, you know, there's a lot of streets in this town that need, but you can't afford to do that just on Chapter 70 monies.
And water.
Water, but getting back to prison mitigation, that was one of the refiles that we did today that was filed by my predecessor, which advocates for a special fund to be created for prison mitigation for towns that have a prison in, in their community. So that was one of the refiles that I did today to keep that on, on the, on the burner for people to talk about.
Sounds good. The, the, the water is, we are, as you know, having been a councillor, we have to either build another well or bring in water sources from other towns to do any kind of expansions, water and sewer capacity. So anything that we can do to help that out.
It's, infrastructure is very important.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Any other councillors? Any questions? All right. Oh, what's that? Oh, please. Please, town manager.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out one thing related to prisons that you may or may not know about. As you know, our, our, our fire department, our EMS service responds to prison and provides medical care and transport. The company that the state had hired to process all the payments went bankrupt. And the town is owed about $135,000, $40,000 that we've got. We've gotten a bankruptcy notice, but what we really need is a check. So I don't know, we're, we're reaching out to our other communities in the state that, that serve, you know, have a prison, a state prison and provide that service and see who else is unfortunately on, in our same predicament. But it's something that we can't afford to not be paid for the service we provide.
It's a, it's a receivable that you.
It's very much a receivable. And because we only receive a portion of, under the state rules, of what would cost us to go. I think we actually owed over 400, but when we do the math, it really comes down to about 140. So help to get that sorted. I'm not sure what the DOC is doing about it, but I just want to bring it to your attention.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Will.
I'll just summarize by, again, thank you for, for coming here tonight. And we will be meeting with our Regional School Committee in February. So again, I would certainly strongly ask for your support in, in, in fighting for those funds for our regional school system. I, I know they've been hurting in the last couple of budget cycles. And if you can't get on that caucus regarding regional schools, I would definitely get on that one if you could. But thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
Dennis. We'll look, we'll be in touch very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you to those, for those presentations. They were wonderful. I will move on to, to my town manager's report. We'll turn it over to our town manager and start off with a fire station update.
Thank you. For the fire station update, I actually don't have a lot new to report given that we've had a bit of weather over the holidays and work has certainly continued, but nothing of material to report to you. We did have some really helpful input on how we can improve our report going forward. So we'll be making a more thorough report at our January 21st meeting. And we'll keep on that schedule for you. With regard to Old Town Hall, in my tenure here, I'm really focused on the short term of how to continue to resolve all the records and the items that are stored in the building. You probably all know this, but just in case, I'll tell you that there was, the previous archivist we had at the library actually put together a whole report of the records at the Old Town Hall and how, and how to address resolving that matter. I am meeting next week with the new archivist and our IT department to talk about dusting that off and updating the numbers and figuring out what we need to do to actually get records. Once we determine what we have to keep, how we're going to take them out, digitize them, store them, make them available and so on. So we're working on that. And then maybe not this week since it's super cold, but really urging the staff to have records over there, to get back over there when the weather's a little less cold because the building isn't heated, to go through what they have, work with the archivist and really put some elbow grease into looking at that and formulating a plan. We do have some money set aside. $247,000 was set aside a couple of years ago and it hasn't been used. So we're going to start with that. But there's also an upcoming IT grant from the state. The Community Compact comes out next month. Digitization of records is something that we can apply for, so we're looking at that with IT. So I know there's others working on what's the long-term plan for the building? What do we want to do with it? How does that happen? I'm more focused on getting it ready so that when that decision is made, people can move forward with it.
Thank you.
With regard, sorry. Oh, question, sure.
Go with questions on this one. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's actually a combined question with the fire station and that Old Town Hall.
Okay.
I, I don't know if you have an answer, sorry. I don't know if you have an answer because of how you just described your approach there, but is there a plan to integrate the current fire station into that town hall? Or is there any conversation about what that looks like?
I haven't heard it. I mean, as you know, the building bumps right up against the Old Town Hall. I've heard someone say if you're going to, you're going to need to make it ADA accessible, the building. And most likely a elevator would go on the outside to make the second floor accessible. It's not going to be possible with a fire station right there. I think, I understand that there's, there hasn't been funds set aside for the removal of the old fire station. But at some point, there'll have to be a, a study of all, any hazardous materials in the building, that all identified, abated, and then money to take it down. Because it's not going to have a use for us as it has for the last however many years.
So you did, you answered part of my next question was the, what happens with the fire building after the folks move out there?
It's going to get, it's going to get closed at this point. But I think it's part of the, the greater conversation about what do we want to do in this area of town and how does that, you know, how are we best using the property that we have and supporting whatever it is we want to do with the?
Is there a current cost to the town for that Old Town Hall building just sitting there right now? I mean, is there a regular? Or are we paying energy bills? You said there's no heat in the building.
The heat is turned off. I mean, it's mothballed, if you will. There is some, we do have our facilities person going over there and keeping an eye on it and checking on things. There may be some de minimis costs, but it's, I think a bigger issue is that because it's uninhabited, it is a risk in terms of insurance. If it were something to happen to it, we wouldn't necessarily be able to recover the full cost of it, and insuring an uninhabited building is very expensive. So it's something to be aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah?
Yes, Mr. Lindy. So on the Old Town Hall, is it safe to be in there? Is it, is there any health and safety concerns to be in there? You mentioned employees going in there. I actually got a chance to tour it at one point, and it seems like there might be some mold issues and things like that, and I'm just wondering what the safety is for employees to go in there.
Yes, there is mold. No, we would not want people there on any long-term basis, but I think going in there and simply reminding themselves what records they have and then leaving to come back and look at the retention schedule and make a plan is fine, but it needs to be limited.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the town manager on those first two topics? Okay, seeing none, one more.
Next topic is the tree mitigation schedule update. So I've been meeting with Ray, there you are, Ray, a couple of times. He provided me with two documents recently, right before Christmas. One is a proposed tree preservation ordinance, which would, as I understand it, be an update, if you will, or an expansion of the current shade tree ordinance that we have. And then a second document is a tree mitigation schedule that he has, he had talked with the previous town manager about the fact that with, when there's a subdivision proposed, there's a conversation with the planning board necessarily about mitigation of trees coming down, but there's nothing that's defined and specific. And so the tree committee has put these two documents together, and they'd like to see them move forward. I've shared them with town attorney. I'm going to, we're going to be discussing them with planning and understanding the staff perspective of that before we bring it forward. I think there's some good things about them. I think there's some things we'll need to work through. I know that it would be a priority of the committee to see a full-time tree warden. As you know, we've got several, separate legislation going along to at least change it from the tree warden from elected to appointed. Somehow that got lost in, over the years, and fix that at least to start with. Whether the next year's budget will enable us to achieve their goal, I can't say at this point because we're just starting the budget process. But I certainly applaud their efforts to put more focus on, on public trees, on what happens on some properties that are being developed. I think it's all a good conversation, just not sure where we're going to end up at this point, but we're working on it.
Okay. Any questions for her on that?
Mr. Murp.
Last, last meeting, I think we talked a little bit about the current part-time tree warden at the, the town. I think you were going to answer this question, employs or pays?
We don't pay him, he's a volunteer.
Okay.
I'm not sure how he got to his position because it said the, our laws say elected, but he, I don't know. He's very much wants to be, move on to other things in life, and so we do need to fill that. I recently met with the vice chair of the Trees Wardens Association, who's a former employee of mine, so I just happen to have that connection. He reminded me that, you know, you, you can, you don't necessarily have to have specific licensed background to be a tree warden. Just attending their annual conference, which actually happens, I guess, in January, somewhere in the state, is, is helpful. And if we can't go the route of a full-time person, perhaps we can share with another community, find a part, you know, some part-time, a person who was maybe got some arborist or landscape background that has an interest in trees that can, we could start to work with and build that, that knowledge base and expertise. I think we're going to have to figure that out.
And when you say find a full-time person, is that a paid position in theory?
That's what is, I think is proposed by this ordinance, and so that's what we need to figure out, what, you know, can we, what can we achieve and how can we do more than we're doing today?
Okay, thank you.
Any other council question? Seeing none, one's the last item.
Last one is EV charging stations. So at some point in our past, the, the two charging stations were added here, and they have two hoses each, so we can support four cars. I don't know what went into the decision about why we did them the way we did and why there's not a charge for them now. We do have a proposal from the firm who we did work with for those. They can be switched over to ones that people have to pay for. We don't, because they're not separately metered, I can't tell you how much they use today, just can tell you that if you look at what an average is for the type of charger we have, it, from what we can research, it probably costs approximately 1,200 bucks a month for those if they're used 24/7, and I don't know that they are. There are grants, incentives out there to change, we could at no cost change them from what they are to ones that people have to pay for. And if it's for our own use, we could, I understand that we could be given access card or something that would allow our vehicles to not pay to use it, whereas if somebody drives up who's visiting and wants to plug in while they're here, they would have to pay for it. I notice when I'm here that, you know, the vehicles that we have are generally parked in those locations and using it. I have seen private people come up and use them, occasionally an employee. I can't tell you how much of the time that happens. You may have a better sense than I do. This was something I think we were going to put on the, on the long-term plan for the new manager to work on, but it's something we could probably start to explore sooner.
Okay. All right, Ms. Lindy, press.
So I did a little research on this, and it's my understanding that when they were put in as part of the agreement, there was to be no charge for them. I think there is paperwork that says that, and I think we should talk to the Energy Committee because I think they're aware of that.
Okay, that's helpful.
Any other questions?
Can I just ask, how are we discussing possibly charging? Where did this, is this originating from the town manager's office?
I was asked by another counselor about where we were on it, and I think there had been some discussion about it, but I'm not sure exactly from where.
Okay.
It wasn't on my radar screen to work on until I was asked. So I, I mean, I think it could go either way, but certainly if there's an agreement or understanding, I want to, you know, respect that.
Yeah, no, absolutely, thank you, that just clarified.
I could respond to that. Some residents asked me about it. I guess one of them tried to park here overnight, knowing that they were gone, and there was other cars here, and they were just wondering why and do they charge and stuff like that. So I told, I would bring it up.
Okay, no, I was just interested if it was the town that was.
It was in the town manager's report that Mr. Dutton had asked Dawn to look into it, and they brought that up to me also.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Any further questions regarding the charging stations? Or any other further requests for the town manager for next meeting?
Yes, I have a question. Yes, thank you. I understand that funding has run out for transit cares or the company that takes the low-income people around town so they can do their errands. I, I understand that was funded by grant money, if that's correct, and it does not have grant money now. However, are you able to find in the budget money to get the transit care up again? Because I think that's an imperative thing for our lower-income members of our town to be able to have access to.
I just discussed this with the COA director just earlier this week. I can tell you that we have, we have applied for the renewal of that funding, and we are waiting to hear, hopefully in the next week, that that's funded or it's not. But, you know, while that's unfortunate, it's also been a good reminder for our users that we also have our own van, we have, we have volunteers, there are other ways we can help people get to things. It takes a little more planning perhaps on their part to not just call and say, hey, I'd like to go to, you know, the store, you know, in a half an hour. We can't necessarily do that, but we are working through it. So I'd say that's where we are at the moment.
And, well, it depends on the grant, of course.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Allenberg. Mr. Murphy?
I was just wondering if we could add, I did see in the operational report that there was, I don't know if I would define it as a feasibility study or some possible work that could be done over at the library. Would it be possible to get an update at the next meeting on what that looks like? Thank you.
Ms. Lindy?
Piggybacking on what Council Murphy just said, I would love to see the library director come here and do a presentation at some point in time. I know there's information about capital upgrades and stuff, and I'd like to see them. They also want to talk about some possible changes. One of the trustees brought up to me about the role of the library board of trustees, and they want to be able to present to the council.
Get them in our presentation.
So two more things. Along the lines of Bridgewater Cares, there's a wonderful program that's going on at the Council on, the Senior Center. I'm just used to Council on Aging from Brockton, pardon me. Where the funding's going to end at the end of March. It is, it's, it's like an Alzheimer's dementia program. Michelle Brace is in charge of it. It's a wonderful program, and I found out when I was at one of the parties that it was done the end of, the end of March. And I'm hoping somehow we can find a way to continue that program. The other thing is, we have a community health center over there nearby that is underutilized. I, I mean, this is probably more down the road, but I think the senior center is sometimes so utilized and so out of space that there's no place else to go. So if, if we can, like, put that on the radar screen someplace. And then lastly, when would we be getting info for budget and finance for, for the budget process starting?
I believe we're required to provide you with a first pass on the budget by February 1st.
Okay.
And I can report on those other items. Emily and I talked about those just the other day as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other counselors with any requests, comments? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, we do not have any further discussions. Any committee reports from any council members that'd like to share? Mr. Murphy?
Sorry, it's a lot of meat tonight.
How are you today?
Not sorry. A quick update on the town manager's search. We did hear from a lot of residents who would like to have further feedback in the process, and so I've heard you, and I promised an open and clear and transparent process. And so we've scheduled an open community forum for the January 22nd at 6:00 PM at the Senior Center in Bridgewater. I've asked the town clerk, the town council clerk to post that as an ad hoc meeting and a council meeting, so if, if any of us would also like to be present, I could be, good opportunity to hear from folks. And so I would ask anybody to share that message as much as possible. I would love to see a great turnout there. So again, January 22nd, 6:00 PM at the Bridgewater Senior Center for an opportunity to speak directly with Community Paradigm, the company who we've hired to help assist in that process. And so they'll be, they'll be coordinating and running most of the meeting and listening to folks give that feedback. So I'm excited, I know the committee's excited for that opportunity. As of this morning, we have seven applicants for the position. I did ask the, the search form, I have not seen, nor has the committee seen any resumes. We don't intend to until after the closing date, which is scheduled for January 27th at 3:00 PM is the deadline for applicants. With that being said, the conference that Representative Gallagher mentioned, the firm will be present at there, at that conference, and hoping to recruit some folks from there as well, too. They did tell me that they're expecting close to 15 to 20 applicants in total for the position, and so I'm hoping we get on the higher end of that number and have a good pool to choose from. So all going well, the committee will meet again following the deadline on the 27th. I think we have a meeting scheduled for the day after on the 28th to start that review process and then hopefully carry out some interviews in, in early February. And so more to come there on the schedule, but things are moving along, and Community Paradigm seems to feel really good about how things are moving, even with that holiday break that we had as well, too. So thank you all for that reached out and requested that meeting for the community. I'm glad we were able to do that, it's a necessary step in the process.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lindy?
I have two financial items. I think we're going to be referring another one tonight to budget and finance, so we will meet at 6:30 prior to the next council meeting. And if we can get any preview, I know it's February 1st, but, okay. If we can't, we can't. I'll schedule one for the first February meeting. I just want to go to budget and finance before the full council so we can start looking at it. Thank you.
Ms. Lindy? Ms. Driggle?
I just wanted to, more getting on the topic of public involvement, just a reminder to all that on January 16th, we will be having Pathway to Progress for the Central Square redesign, so please, please, please come out. I believe it begins at 6:30 at the Mowgli Center at BSU. So if you have certain opinions about what that design is going to look like, please feel free to attend. We want to hear from as many residents as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Driggle. Just for, for information to, to some counselors, my paperwork. So based on, unfortunately, Ms. Robinson leaving the council, we did reassign a few members to a few of the subcommittees. We had Mr. McKinnon be appointed to the CEDC Subcommittee to replace Ms. Robinson there. We have our new counselor, Ms. Loretta, on the Strategic Planning Committee, and we have Mrs. Allenberg on the Review Committee. So those will be those replacements between now and April, and then there'll be new committees set when there's a changeover in leadership at that time. Thank you for the reports. Moving on.
I, in reading the newspaper and hearing media reports, the Wampanoag Native American tribe is going to be creating a welcome center down in Taunton, and that could necessitate a meeting for the gaming committee of the council so we can get ahead of it before.
It's still in place, so we'll have to, to see what comes about.
Yeah.
We need to convene that group, we shall. Thank you. Next up, we have legislation for action. First up is Order OFY 25-033, an order for the placement of flagpoles. We kept this at a council level, and I believe Counselor Chase has a few amendments to this. I'll turn it over to Counselor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. This legislation was introduced at our December 17th meeting for first reading, and following council discussion, our town attorney had delivered comments of concern to him with respect to some of the language, particularly as, as it related to interaction with the town manager in this regard. And the, the amendment that I proposed, that you have a copy of before you, does remedy that. I've actually discussed this with Attorney Rollins. It, it really does a couple of things. It, it does provide for at least the, the concept, the notion of more than, more than one new flagpole, if that is something that is to be considered. And more importantly, with respect to Attorney Rollins' concerns, it does provide for, well, it, it removes the issue of procurement and funding language from the town manager. So we're not directing her to undertake action which really should be part of the appropriation process by the council. So it kind of cleans up that, that area. And, and that's really the whole extent of the proposed amendment, and otherwise it, it is as we have last discussed.
And just to, to let the public know, so basically we're stating that we're ordering that the town manager undertake all actions necessary to seek proposals for the purchase of an additional flagpole or poles and relocation of the existing flagpole. So that was basically the changes in the language.
That's correct.
All right. Do I have a motion to amend? Ms. Driggle, second by Mr. Lindy. Any questions from any counselors on the amendment?
Not on the amendment.
Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendments to this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moves, so the amendments carry. So now, in order to, then a vote for to approve this order as amended, do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Driggle, second.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion by Mr. McKinnon. Mr. McKinnon, you want to open this?
Podcast discussion.
Yeah, so the question is, do we have any intent, any place of flying the Commonwealth flag outside?
Well, if we were to, if we were to authorize, if that, we're basically asking the town manager to consider the possibility of two. manager to consider the possibility of two or three flagpoles.
Yeah.
And were her recommendation to accommodate three poles, that would provide for the flying the flag of the Commonwealth.
Yes. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. McKinnon? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving of the order, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have Ordinance D F Y 25-008, Proposed Amendment to Part II, the Admin Code, Chapter 1, Article 3, Section 1B, Subsection 2. This was introduced by myself and reviewed by Rules and Procedures. This was allowing the town council president to make appointments to ad hoc committees that were specifically to the town council, as opposed to going through the town manager, as it was written before. So, as I mentioned, Rules and Procedures voted 3-0 to recommend this on 12-12. Looking for a motion to send to advertising. Second by Ms. Driggle, is any discussion on the matter? Seeing?
Just a quick, just a question.
Go ahead.
So, the ad hoc committees have a finite timeframe. However, like the downtown revitalization, ad hoc committee is needed for a while. So, I'm just wondering if there's any kind of procedure in place to make that more of a regular committee, or, you know, I don't want it to be restricted. I think we're gonna be dealing with downtown revitalization for years.
That's just, well, that goes to just the establishment of ad hoc committees. That would be a separate portion of probably in that, that chapter. So, this is just as addressing who can make the appointments to those committees.
Yep.
So, we can go back and look at that later if you have a concern.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just very briefly, I'll also take a look at it. I'm trying to recall off the top of my head, and I don't wanna do that. If the appointments of committees, the statement that committees are appointed by the town manager is in the charter or in the admin code, I'll have to look at that, because if it's a charter thing, then this would be a charter amendment as opposed to an ordinance.
Right, I think it's, I think it's in the admin code.
It may very well be. I'm just going off the top of my head.
Yeah, but if you wanna double check on that.
But I certainly am going to look into it, because you may have to amend this from a ordinance to a charter change.
Yeah, again, double check that for me.
You may not, though.
Yeah. I didn't think we needed to do it as a charter change, but if you wanna double check, I'd greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll take a look.
Thank you. We can still go forward with advertising, though?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I'll let you know at the next scheduled meeting what I find and where I found it.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor sending the advertising, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And finally, under Legislation for Action, General Ordinance D F Y 25-011, General Ordinance to amend Chapter 300, Article 2, Truck Exclusions. This was introduced by Councillor Lindy. I'll ask Councillor Lindy if he wants to go over anything specific regarding it.
I think it stands for itself.
All right. So, again, just to remind councilors, this was dealing with a truck exclusion, dealing with Hayward Street and High Street, to prohibit trucks greater than two and a half tons from using those roadways as travel-throughs. It borders East Bridgewater, and I think they've got some restrictions on some of their roads there. This was sent to Rules and Procedure, and they voted 3-0 to approve it as well. Looking for a motion to send to advertising.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Lindy, second. For Mr. McKinnon, any discussion on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor sending the advertising, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we do not have any old business, but we do have some new business. Starting off with Order OFY 25-035, Vote to Authorize Acting Town Manager Blythe Robinson to Sign on Behalf of the Town of Bridgewater. This was in reference to a Murphy's Landing 40B project. Ms. Town Manager, would you like to expand upon that any further for us?
I had been led to believe that this was something that could be signed by, by the manager. It was supposed to be handled, the project's taken a long time to get to fruition to this point where it's ready to move forward, and when we, when the town attorney and I looked at it, we didn't notice anything in the charter that would give me the authority to sign something like this, and the state has requested that they provide a letter that says that I do have the authority to sign it. So, it's before you simply to allow the, if you approve it, allow the council president to sign that letter.
I see. And I can introduce this. This is basically for an existing 40B project that the town has had. This isn't a new one, just to make that clear. Any, do I have a motion to approve, and then second for discussion? This is to retain it at council level.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Second for discussion.
Mr. McKinnon, do you have a question? Ms. Lindy.
Just a little bit more information about it. It's, it's a little bit confusing, to be perfectly honest with you. I read through the whole thing, and first of all, Zero Plymouth Street is exactly where.
It's actually 980 Plymouth.
It's across from Running River Road.
Yeah.
Before you get to Bridgewater Farms.
Right before you.
On the left-hand side. So, basically, from what I can gather on that, this was just a, it's a regulatory and use agreement. It's a state-based agreement that we just basically need to have a signature by the town manager of the town.
We're like, we're a very limited party to this agreement, which is why we thought it most prudent to bring it before the council to give the town manager authority. If this was property we owned, or something that we were directly using, she would've had authority under the charter to simply sign it. But this is a regulatory agreement that has to do with a development that we don't own. So, we're just the town in which the development is in, essentially.
And this has been through our ZBA, it's been through Conservation, it's been through Planning Board. It's to create eight units of housing, of which two are affordable. So, it's a program that the developer took advantage of, and we were a little bit surprised when the state asked for this letter, but here we are.
So, it's basically a state request, that we just need to go through the procedure to, or to sign the proper forms to satisfy the state? All right. Any other questions? Ms. Allenberg.
I would like to make a comment, and that is that I would like to see if this is 40B, that this be restricted to 40B for elderly only.
We have, that has nothing to do with what's before you. That would be an issue at the ZBA level, when the 40B project is going through the comprehensive permit process. That's long gone. This is literally just a regulatory agreement. Frankly, it's really between the developer and the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. We're signing off as the community in which this project exists. We have no authority to shape the project, we have no authority to negotiate the lip. If you don't sign it, I suspect maybe the developer sues us.
Right.
It's, it's a very nominal thing for us, because it has to do with the developer saying to the state, hey, I know that I'm confined to the use of this under these conditions which exist under 40B. So, we're very limited in what we can do with it.
I have another question, if I may, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
If authority is given to our town manager, will it be for this project only?
It's only, it's literally only to sign this particular regulatory agreement, because the way I reviewed the charter, I didn't see that she had authority, because it's such a unique situation where we're, it's not something we own. If it was property that we owned, and this had to do with the use of that property, the charter gives absolute authority to the town manager. But before I had her sign a certification with the state and say, oh, yeah, I can do this, I didn't see that language specifically in the charter. So, we thought the safest bet is to go to the council.
And again, it's, it's a 40B project that was in the pipeline before it allowed us to get to our limit that we're at right now. Did you have another question, Ms. Lindy?
No.
Okay. So, again, this is just retaining at the council level. We'll bring it back up for a final vote at our next meeting.
Could I ask a question?
Oh, go ahead, Ms. McGrath, I didn't see your hand.
Has this been in process since like 2019? Because I saw the letter from the town clerk.
Is it a letter?
Yeah, this, this, this project, because isn't it from Murphy's Landing LLC?
We, I know nothing about the project.
Okay.
We're only involved at this stage relative to, maybe the ZBA sent this project for a long time. I have no idea.
Yeah, because I saw a letter, I mean, I, because I got confused, because it says the Massachusetts, and it doesn't say the, the company's name. So, when I looked it up, see how it says, it just says a Massachusetts Limited Liability Company. When I looked that up, I got the town clerk letter about this property, and it's Murphy's LLC.
What we're dealing with right now, that's before you, has nothing to do with the approval of the property. That may have happened recently.
Yeah.
All we're at now is the stage of, I've received this, a regulatory agreement somewhat recently, and they were asking the town manager to sign a certification that I didn't feel comfortable signing this as the charter's currently written. So, that's why we came to you all to just sign it. Regulatory agreements are signed in many of these projects. They're all boilerplate or standard form language, and really, they relate to the developer agreeing with the state that I'm going to build this project in a way that it was approved by the U.S. That's really all this is.
Well, that's what I was wondering, because it's been so long, and I know the permits and different things might change, so.
We, us signing this doesn't do anything additional, other than say we're a signatory on this, and we can, if, if by the way of someday the state said, well, you are forced that they're not following the rules, we could do that under this regulatory agreement. But the project is long since done, that's why we're at this stage.
Okay, thank you.
Another comment?
Hold on a second. Ms. Loretty.
I did look into this, and this was approved by the ZBA back in 2020, so it looks like it's been going on for a while.
That makes sense.
Thank you, Ms. Loretty. Do you have another question, Ms. Allenberg?
Just a comment that we in Bridgewater often feel imposed upon by the state, and this will be bringing another state entity into our town. That's just a comment.
It's already in town.
No, it's not.
If there's a private developer that has to sign a regulatory agreement in order to, I'm not even speculating why they have a regulatory agreement, but under the idea that they have these affordable units within this development, there's some, something is required under 40B or some other statute. But this is, this is a developer's project, other than the fact that there's a comprehensive permit they have involved.
Mr. President, may I, through you, may I speak to Attorney Rollins?
Well, not right now. Again, I think he's clarified it. I don't think we need to beat a dead horse. I do have a question here from Ms. Lindy.
Through you to the town attorney. So, if we vote on this to keep it at council level, we vote on it next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And who is the developer, since it's not clear?
I'm sure, I'm sure Ms. Robinson can obtain it. We can give you whatever the approval was, but we can't speak to the approval, is my point.
I understand that.
Yeah, Carmine Pugnali is the manager of the, of the developer, but we certainly could.
Just the company, I'd like to know the company.
It's under 464 Crescent Street LLC. That's what it's named under. It's a limited liability company for the, for the location. All right, any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Allenberg.
I just wanted to say that I believe that the state agency is the one that has to approve the people that come into it and all of that, and so therefore, it will be in a management position in the, for the entity, but.
All right. Well, again, you can have a discussion with the attorney after the meeting if you need to. Let's, so again, do I have a motion in a second to keep it at a council level? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, motion still carries, I heard two votes. All right, next up. Let's see, Proposed Zoning Ordinance D F Y 25-014, Zoning Amendment for Accessory Dwelling Units. Again, this was proposed by myself, but in conjunction with the Community Economic Development Department, just updating the language on ADUs here in town. Looking to refer this to the CEDC, the CED and Planning Board. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Driggle. Any questions from any councilors at this point in time? Yes, Ms. McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. How will these units be numbered, for mailing reasons?
I'm sorry, again?
To, to send mail to a unit. How will they post postal numbers?
I do not know. Again, this is just dealing with the square footage requirements, I believe. That's, that's the largest part of it. Any more details regarding that, you might have to speak with Mr. Rulie, or look into the, the language that's already there.
How about the driveways? Like, what happens?
I believe that, again, this is mostly just dealing with the square footage situation. As far as the specifics of the actual building, again, that's probably gonna go to the language of the planning board, or whatever that might need to be, you know, approved in order to build one of these units. And sort of the specific units, you know, specific requirements based on setbacks and all that type of stuff that would have to be addressed at a planning board level.
I just thought there'd have more answers, because there are some of the things about the setbacks, the corner, you know, the corner house, and I was just wondering, are we gonna have a limit of how many of these units can be built in Bridgewater? So, nobody will come with the second reading? We could ask a little bit more questions?
Well, again, this will get sent to CEDC and Planning Board for discussion, so you're certainly welcome to sit in on that, that meeting, and hear that discussion at the time. Ms. Lindy.
So, can, is this limited to family members of people that are in, you know, that own the building? Or is it like anybody can go into one of them?
It all depends on, again, it's regarding the Affordable Homes Act. It's amending the zoning act to allow ADUs up to 900 square feet, where the current language caps it at 800 square feet. So, we're just basically going up 100 square feet on the allowance of the ADUs. That's what this is addressing.
Mr. President.
Ms. Driggle.
So, I think the confusion lies in ADUs specifically. So, I do think that there are a few companies that are actively building them in the local area. There is a company out of Plymouth, I believe. They're coming to speak with my company. I have no problem seeing whether or not they would be willing to come and speak to a municipality. I think it might be beneficial not only to us as councilors, but to our residents, to hear from people that are actively building these units in other communities, to see whether or not they can maybe engage us in a little bit better of dialogue. But this specific ordinance that we're dealing with right here is specifically to change the language because of what Bridgewater currently has. We are currently at 800, trust and believe, I help clients get these things approved all the time. We are at 800 right now, and we need to be in line with what the state wants us at, which is 900. It's simple as that.
Thank you, Ms. Driggle, appreciate that. Any further questions?
Just a comment. I think that would be really helpful to educate us.
Very good. All right. So, again, I had a motion, second, to send this to CEDC and Planning Board. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And finally, under New Business, we have Resolution RFY 25-005, a resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities Program for Improvements to Summer Street Park. Again, looking to keep this at a council level. Can I add a little bit more of a description on that from the town manager, if you'd help us out with that, please?
We think we want to be able to demonstrate to the state that we have, you know, support to continue to file grants for this project. We don't have exact budget yet, we haven't figured out all the details, but we at least wanna be able to be prepared to, to apply, and so that's what this is asking for.
This is what it's written. Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to keep that at a council level?
Second.
Second. Second.
Second by Mr. Lindy. Any further discussion? Do you have a question, Mr. McKinnon?
This is about the old Trail Park, right?
This is about what again?
Trail Park that we're doing?
I think is, I'm, is this more in line with the old gas station park situation?
Oh, yeah, no, that's Summer Street. Yep, you're right. Sorry. My fault.
No, no problem. Any other questions? Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Robinson, I have two questions. It says phase one will cost a little bit over $1 million. Do you know how many phases there are to finish in this project?
I do not.
And the other thing, there's a driveway to get to the apartments behind there. There's only one way to get into the apartment building behind the park. Do you know how we'll share that?
I will have to check.
Okay. And for safety reasons too, because you might have kids running around.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Again, I believe if you talk to Mr. Ruley, I know there's some plans, design plans for the area. If you want to reach out and ask to see what's, what those plans look like now, that might help you visualize that a little bit better.
I'll go make appointment with him.
Mr. Perry, just point of order. I do believe it's an easement over there.
Allowing access to that building in the back?
Restricted access, so I think it was. I'm not, I could be wrong, but I think that's what it was.
Plus I was worrying about kids running up and down in the driveway.
Oh, no, I get it. I do completely, because there's no fence, there's nothing there. Yeah.
It might be something in the design that might limit that. Yes.
I know it keeps us here later, but I'd love to see it present to all of us so we know what the plans are for that parcel.
Oh, as far as what? Yeah, I don't think there's a final design yet. I think there's still being worked on.
Even preliminary.
Yeah, we can look into that. So we had a first and a second. All those in favor of keeping this at a council level, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. All right. That wraps up our business for this evening. So, I know, I'm going to get to that after saying the business that we have in that regard. So the next step is this and comments. Again, due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Please state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes if you can. Dr. Hunt?
Carlton Hunt, 80 Ossen Street. Two points to the townhouse. That's what it used to be called in 1843. The CPC is considering funding a historic assessment of the interior of the building so that we know for future planning what needs to be preserved, can be preserved, should not be preserved. There's a lot of history in that building that needs to be understood before and during the reuse planning. So CPC has the funds. It doesn't have to come through you guys. Our administrative funds could pay for a historic architect to come in and do an assessment of the historic elements of that building. That needs to be done now, not later. Second, to the chief's point on solar panels, as Energy Committee Chair, I've been advocating for solar fields on town property for two years. I have a PowerPoint that I put together that actually looks at town-owned parcels on the east, central, and west side of town, and I'm happy to present that to you. It's a little long, but I'm happy to present that to you because it is a potential revenue source for the town of Bridgewater. And as Energy Committee Chair, I specifically think that part of town is ripe for solar panel development. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Anybody else like to come up and speak? MJ, come on up.
Hard to follow Carlton. Thank you for that, Carlton. MJ Spigone, 5 Lake Shore Center, Unit 1128. Just a couple of things tonight, and I'll be brief. First, I want to thank the chief for coming in and giving the presentation to the council. I think it's important that we have town departments that show what they're doing in their daily work and, you know, justify how they're funded and their operations. And I think Chief Delmonte is probably one of the great leaders of our police department and public safety community, along with our fire chief and other members of the police and fire departments. So I appreciate his service, and when I was a coworker alongside him for about four years in the town manager's office, I greatly appreciated our conversations and talks about town operations. So that is that part. The second part, put on conversation this evening, was about the EV chargers outside the Academy Building. Having been a member of the previous Dutton administration, I can definitely tell you the project, the Academy Building renovation project, the EV chargers, if I recall correctly, were actually part of the project itself to lead to its LEED certification, the L-E-E-D certification. Those chargers, if I recall correctly, were intended to only be for town fleet vehicles as part of an initiative to bring the town fleet vehicles over from gas use vehicles to electronic battery-operated vehicles, which is around the time that we actually procured two Mitsubishi Uplander PHEV vehicles, and I believe one Honda Insight or Honda Clarity. All three of those vehicles were EV vehicles, and those chargers were made to be installed in those two spots outside the Academy Building to service at least two of those three vehicles at any given time. Now, knowing that there's a proposal now to possibly make those, you know, payer-use chargers, I believe the original intent was actually to only have them be used by vehicles stationed at the Academy Building that were used either by the building commissioner, one of the inspectors, and I believe the health agent or whoever would be using the third vehicle because it was sort of up for grabs. But as, as the executive assistant in the office from 2015 to 2018, I can certainly tell you right now, that was sort of the original intent of taking care of that, and the only reason I know that is because I actually helped handle some of the documentations and get the vehicles insured. But the chargers, I believe, were originally intended just for town operation only. The question of putting on a shut-off switch, I don't know if that was something that was ever going to be discussed, or if it was ever, at the time, the technology might not have been available, but certainly, you know, use of it by the public was an unintended consequence to those chargers being there, as far as I can tell. Because I know in my years of driving by the Academy Building after having left office, I can definitely say that there have been vehicles outside the building after hours that probably aren't town employee vehicles or town vehicles themselves to be on the chargers. So certainly if there is a shut-off mechanism now, like we have with what are called the Gas Boy gas tanks down at the DPW, used to be a key operated, then we switched over to a card operated. If we have that capability of putting in all those chargers now, it probably would be best to do so because they were meant as a town asset only. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, MJ. Anybody else like to come up and speak? One once, go one twice. Thank you for those that came up to speak this evening. We will move forward with council comments, and I will start with Ms. McGrath on the left.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a member of the CERT team. It's the Community Emergency Respond Team. And the basic training for those who want to join the CERT team begins in March. The information's on Facebook, and I'm amazed at the different skills I've learned, whether in fire safety, first aid, incident command, to being prepared for terrorist and emergency situations. So I encourage residents to volunteer for this, this team. It will benefit not only the community, but you and your family and what you learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Ms. Triggles?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to congratulate councillor Loretta again. It has been an absolute pleasure getting to know you outside of this room as well, and the town is in great hands with him sitting amongst us. So I just wanted to give you your kudos. And I wanted to thank Chief Delmonte and State Rep. Gallagher again for showing up and attending our meeting and providing us with very detailed presentations of what they are going to be doing to make Bridgewater and Reinham better. And both of you make our town extremely proud, so I did want to be on the record stating that. And I want to thank all the residents for coming out despite the bitter cold outside. Please stay warm, stay safe, and stay vigilant. Make sure that your pets are only outside for short periods of time, and just take care of yourselves. A lot of sickness going around, so I just wish everybody well. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Ms. Triggles. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just briefly say it was very enlightening to hear the comments from Chief Delmonte. He's, he's always presented very timely information for the benefit of the council, and it was certainly no exception tonight. It was great as well to see Representative Gallagher here, to know that our man on Beacon Hill is so intimately familiar with our council and the problems of the town of Bridgewater. So that's really all I have, but it was very good to hear his comments as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Ms. Lindy?
I will echo the comments of my fellow councillor, Chase. I think we're going to have good luck for the town of Bridgewater with a former councillor and someone that's dedicated his life to public service. I think we'll have frequent communication, and I asked him, and I hope he'll bring the state senator here so we can meet him. We have a new state senator too. So if we have our legislative delegation really pushing for us, I think it'll pay off. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, just quickly echoing the same sentiments as the other councillors, the thank you to the chief, the entire department, Representative Gallagher, and citizens that spoke tonight. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes, I just wanted to make another comment, that we still have many boards and committees and so forth which are not filled, and to make a request for people to step forward as volunteers to get these boards and commissions filled. And one of the concerns I have is I think that a lot of our meetings need to be televised, some of the other meetings, not just on Zoom, but actually take place in here and so forth. And I think that BTV needs volunteers as well. So if people want to volunteer for that, that would be great. And then lastly, I want to just compliment Chief Delmonte on an excellent presentation. And congratulations to Mr. Loretta. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Ms. Loretta?
Well, thank you all for being so welcoming. It's been a pleasure to get to know you all better, and that goes for the residents as well. Thank you very much, and the town manager. It's been a pleasure to, to be here. Thanks for a great first meeting. The, the presentation from Chief Delmonte was very impressive, and I really appreciated that update. It was very organized and very professional, and we're very lucky to have, to have him here as, as our police chief.
Thank you, Mr. Loretta. Mr. McKinnon?
I just want to echo most of our councillor's comments too on Dennis and Delmonte's presentations today. Those were good, and it's always good to hear from both of them. Want to welcome aboard John Loretta. It's definitely a good addition, and I wish you nothing but luck come April, because that time's coming around pretty soon. And I also pulled my papers too, so there was a point where half of town thought I was running, half of it thought I wasn't, and I pulled my papers, and by tomorrow I should have all 50 signatures in. So I should be sealed and deal, ready to go as of tomorrow, and I just want to, as Sonia said, tell everyone just stay healthy and stay well during the wintertime, because as she said, there is a bunch of colds, colds going around, and, I mean, I put my jacket back on midway through the, through the meeting. It is cold out there too, so, but that's it for me.